Hey, Mark.
How you doing?
Why, sir?
Good to see you.
You too.
How'd you go on that?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Much to be, uh, got a little, uh, help for you, dude?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be fine, but I'm getting cold.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we've been the last couple of years.
Oh, I get it.
My sister's from all of the local. And they've been fine. So, it's pretty easy. It still takes, I mean, certainly, we're used to it.
Right, right, right.
But, uh, I'm, I admit to asking you, Mr. Black, so I thought you asked that question. But I'm the guy who tells, as I say.
Oh, I think it was too early, I think.
Yeah, oh, but I think you asked something. Tell you better to answer. If I find your question.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember what you said?
Yeah.
I have the, that felt like. Anytime you said that.
No, I was thinking, I think, you know, your car, uh, car was back in the seat.
Uh.
I'd call order of the regular scheduled meeting of Rockhampton City Council. This time, I'd like for everybody to please stand and I'll ask Councilman Joyner if he can do this.
Hello, Saul. Almighty God, we thank you for this rich privilege that you saw in your wisdom and knowledge to allow us to be in the positions that we're in and the beautiful time to be in our city and this nation. We pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your favor, God, to do what's best for all of your people. And we thank you for that, and we honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a please call of all.
Councilman O'Malley.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Boyner.
Here.
Stephen Wolf. Dalton.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
DeBarr Swartford.
Here.
Here we have Coram. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled City Council meeting, which was held on September eighth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So. Motion by Councilman Joyner, second by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, are there any additions and or deletions to the agenda that we need to consider tonight? Hearing none, this time I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Peter Barney. Roll three up, please.
Just have three things, Mr. Mayor. One, one of them is that the Imperial Center Theater will be putting on performances of a Charlie Brown Christmas early in December. We invite anyone who'd like to audition for a part in that play to come to the theater tonight or tomorrow night between six and eight P. M. to audition, audition for those, those parts. You need to bring your singing voice up if you're coming to that. We have a job fair planned for this coming Saturday, November first. We'll be conducting Career Fair at the Booker Key Theater between the hours of ten o'clock and, and two o'clock in the afternoon. The intent is to connect displaced workers with employers in the area. This event's being organized by the city's Human Resources Department. And the last item I had is that on Saturday, November the eighth, we'll be hosting a rabies queen at the Best Friends Dog Park, which should be a sunset park from, from nine o'clock until noon. So if you have a cat or a dog that's four months of age or older, you may bring your pet either, either on a leash or in a carrier to that event. The cost is ten dollars per vaccination and accepting cash only for that event.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Barney. If I have any questions or comments for Mr. Barney. Okay, hearing none, I will move on to our public officiant's. At this time, this is an official public comment. We thank you for coming to the City Council, and we appreciate your views. We value all citizen input, and speaker comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes during the public comment period. At the conclusion of three minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, action, or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. In the board's discretion, it may refer issues to the appropriate city council or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on that common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. That again shall be limited to three minutes. With that, I'd like to invite Mr. Butch Dancy to the podium.
I'm a fan.
This time, I'd like to invite Dr. Koo to the podium.
Good afternoon. How is it possible that a drop of eighty million dollars from our operating budget over a two-year period so invisible? Especially under the eye of banker, council member, someone who's supposed to be physically savvy. I was told that some of you raised questions but were quickly voted down as fear mongers, while the rest continued as usual. Since you all said there's nothing wrong with the way you function, then the error must be structural, set to lull you into complacency, and that system is the committee of the whole. The committee of the whole meetings are known to be a working meeting where all issues of importance are dissected and discussed vigorously prior to council discussions, where people are supposed to raise hard questions and demand real answers, and the truth cannot be put off or voted away or postponed indefinitely. No excuses should be accepted. That is mistake number one. The facilitator, who I understand to be the annually elected mayor pro temp, sets the agenda for the committee of the whole meetings. This person or persons over the past two years had obviously been, not been diligent enough to catch the warning signs of an impending financial meltdown. No one crafted the agenda to catch these mistakes. Either that, or is it just plain incompetence? That is mistake number two. As council members, your priority is to defend the citizens of the city. If there are disagreements and if there are fundament, and if they are fundamental enough to make or break the city like this fiscal crisis, then to me, there should be no such thing as council presenting a unified face. Who are you unifying for if it means hurting all of us? That is mistake number three. Given all that, isn't it time to examine this and other structural inadequacies and change them? The federal government shutdown has been going on since October first. So far, no end, end is in sight. Many people depending on supplemental nutritional aid payments, especially for women and children, may be pushed into a crisis. We may all be seeing folks in dire straits, and the city's financial situation ties your hands, so you are not able to assist anybody. Just thinking about the ripple effects of the city's financial mismanagement should be enough to keep us all awake at night.
Thank you, Dr. Koo. I'd like to invite Mammar Shaeed to the, to the podium.
Mister Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. The recent firing of hundred city employees now faced with the possibility, possible loss of homes, healthcare, and economic stability have many asking, how did Rockhampton go so broke? A council member in a video address denied that shenanigans in the council caused the crisis, but complained of instances of having to fight for monthly statements that came in late and not accurate, of no controls to flag the city council, of accelerated spending by the ex-city manager Keith Rogers, and having to fight to approve the budget. And these shenanigans or cover-ups of unethical or possible illegal practices in the council. Hiding and not sharing red flag activities with the city council was no sweat, and is directly related to the known deep division in the council, compounded by the rigid four-three majority vote used to great advantage by the ex-city manager and his allies on the council to push through their political agendas at the expense of the public good. The four-three majority vote allowed for fiscal mismanagement, lack of transparency, and partisan victory that eventually ran Rockhampton into a state of debt, forcing the city to sacrifice hundred employees to save Rockhampton from further financial ruin. The time for shared responsibility is now, and we demand that the city council members responsible for the majority direction, the four, forfeit their salaries. You took away hundred paychecks, and now give us back your city paycheck, our tax dollars, to pay for the increased utilities and electric costs of the unfortunate hundred people for as long as needed. Don't call it charity. Call it taking financial responsibility for the harm your reckless decisions have caused. Further, elaborate your influence and personal resources to establish soup kitchens and food distribution centers, a basic moral obligation to ensure the hundred people do not go hungry. You and the council manager should further assist the hundred unemployed people. Ninety-day grace periods for you, cities, city fees, utilities and rentals, and partner with private landlords for similar forbearance, and priority rehiring in city vacancies for the newly laid-off employees. If the four-three majority are unwilling to pay for their mistakes and enact the above reasonable demands, the only honorable course of action is voluntary resignation. You have a moral duty to step aside if you cannot govern effectively without destroying the lives of the people yourself.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That brings us to number eight on the agenda, the consent agenda. This time, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of to approve the tax releases, adopt resolutions and ordinances, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required certification on behalf of the city, authorize the city manager to execute the letter of intent, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute release on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Consent agenda passes. Item number nine, is consideration of First Amendment of the, to the restoration and preservation of the grant with the community around the Y. The request is that we approve the amended amendment and authorize the mayor to execute behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for discussion?
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Daughtry.
I've got concerns with this particular item. The, the original grant for this property was awarded in twenty nineteen, but the agreement wasn't executed until late twenty twenty one, more than two years later, and that's not mentioned anywhere. There's also no reference to another hundred thousand dollar grant for the same property approved in January of twenty twenty two, which I voted against, and there was an earlier thirty thousand dollar grant tied to it as well. That's the, none of which were clearly explained. My questions are simple. Has the earlier money been dispersed, such as the thirty thousand dollars into hundred thousand dollars? If not, is it still eligible, specifically the hundred thousand dollars? And if it is, why, why wasn't it disclosed tonight? Who, who inside the city is responsible for confirming that organizations need all program rules before any money goes out the door? This one appears to have been mishandled, and it raises real concerns about the others that we've approved. Going forward, I believe every grant item should include a summary of all previous awards to the same party or property, along with confirmation that everything is in compliance or was in compliance. Until that process is in place and council members have the full picture, I can't support this request.
Thank you, Councilman Daughtry. Is there further discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman Harris, you have four.
Obviously, this transaction occurred before I joined the council, but the history of this transaction, I would like to know a little bit more about it tonight, if at all possible. And the questions Councilman Daughtry had, I think will be helpful for everyone to, to have a little bit clearer understanding of, of this whole project. Thank you.
Mr. Barney, do you have any history on this or anybody else's staff, and I'll recognize you then. Councilman Knight.
Have a little, I don't know that I have it all. What I saw in the file was that an award of thirty thousand dollars had been made for the, for the acquisition of the property. That is a grant to the, to the, to the neighborhood organization so that the property could be acquired, thirty thousand dollars. I saw also in the file that there was apparently a plan to award an additional thirty thousand dollars for the, for the repair or the renovation, but that was not actually accomplished, not done. It was not, a grant apparently not made, and so the only expenditure that I could see was, was thirty thousand dollars. I don't know about the hundred thousand dollars. Somebody can find out.
Yes, sir, good.
I just want to, I just want to respond to that because I had to do a lot of research on this. And I've got all the minutes, everything I referenced. We even had to commit the whole back in July of twenty twenty two, and it was actually a memo that, that Mr. Barney provided to the council dated July fifth, and it was, uh, staff received requests to identify nonprofit entities receiving funding from the city. And the first purpose of this funding, the table below outlines information for nonprofits receiving funding in the general fund of fiscal year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, for which the city does not have current rent increments. And it goes on, and it's showing the nonprofits, and then it gets into the grants. And it specifically states around the Y, the address. It's in table format, it's where I receive the dates. And as of July fifth of twenty twenty two, the hundred thousand dollars was approved on January the tenth, but it had not, to, based on this, in my understanding, it had not, it has not been awarded. But my question also is, with what I asked earlier, is, is that grant still applicable? And if we approve what's tonight going to, to a different owner? I, I, I'm unclear on that. But is that grant still applicable moving forward, or has it ended? Because I, I just don't know, it's not clear. And if you don't know, who does know?
Do anybody might be able to answer that?
I don't know. Is, Cornelia, do you know, can you answer the question about, I guess, the hundred thousand dollars? Yes.
So the hundred, the hundred thousand dollars that you're referencing, that the city council approves appropriated funds for, staff never awarded that hundred thousand dollars to the grantee or to the around-the-Y community. The only award that they've received is thirty thousand dollars that they used to acquire the property back in twenty twenty one. They acquired that property on December of that year. That's the only award that they have received. Even though the council appropriated funding, we were not, staff was not able to move forward because we weren't able to properly vet the application.
So with that being said, the hundred thousand dollars that was approved, is it still active? Or is it?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Knight, I'll recognize you.
I was going to defer to the council member, Joyner. I talked to him this morning, and my understanding is exactly what Ms. McGee stated, that the grant that was approved, well, not approved, well, did not go to this property. And anytime a grant is awarded, then the city has staff that would make sure that all the information that is required from the policy is, is complied. And the, and from the statement that you mentioned about other grants, I, I take offense to that. And the reason being, I take offense because we have a city manager, we have a community development director, we have assistant city managers. We approve policy, they post it here to the policy. And then we have someone in community development that is a compliance staff person, that when a grant is administered, that that person go back and monitor the grant to make sure that they are in compliance for what they're supposed to be doing with the grant funding. We don't do that at the staff, at the council level. That's a staff member job to do, and I hope that that is happening. And I feel that McGee is qualified, and she makes sure that those boxes are checked. And then too, with Mr. Barney, he's been here over forty-some years, and I would hope he wouldn't bring this council something, especially in what's taking place now with auditors in here. It's something that's going to put this council in, not in compliance or in jeopardy. And so I'm glad you asked those questions. But I feel that if any of this was in question, then why would it be on our agenda? And so we paying staff salaries. I'm hoping and praying that those, any grants that the city approve, and we fund those grants, that they are meeting all requirements that are in administrative policy, that the staff have approved and have put in place. And so I just want to say again to city manager, assistant city manager, director, whomever, I feel that they should, should not, and I hope that they would not bring anything to this council without every eye and every teeth being dotted, especially in a climate like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Knight. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman Joyner, I'll recognize you, and I'll recognize you, Councilman Blackwell, acting.
So thank you for the questions. We know that our history was that our goal was to twelve communities that we wanted to do community empowerment with, and was an opportunity for these communities to collaborate and take some of those homes off the register that was in, in sort of dilapidated condition. And there are several communities that move forward, this community struggling a little bit, but they are still working together to do so, and they're willing to put their own resource in it to make it work. And these communities, when they come to the top con to this place, that we can empower them to do so, is not only about dilapidated homes, it's about building a safe community. That these communities have been not given the proper care in the past years, and even in this time that we're in, that these communities still are asking to play a active role in participating and getting these homes and getting these communities safe. And thanks to Mr. Barney and others, that they're still stepping up to do that. And thanks to Ms. McGee and others that have helped us to administrate these programs, and it hasn't always been easy, but if you look at some of the ones that have, have, have made this happen, they did it, and I don't think that we ought to abandon these communities, that we ought to still find a place to keep them going.
Thank you, Councilman Joyner, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you so much, uh, Mister Mayor. I appreciate the comments that have been made. I'm, I'm very disappointed that questions that were legitimate questions, what happens to the hundred thousand dollars? Is it still applicable? Has it been spent? Legitimate question. But I'm disappointed that a swipe would occur at the development opportunities to rebuild communities and neighborhoods that everybody can see if you took the time to go over there, have been clearly neglected. I'm thankful that the community is working together to try to change their own destiny. I'm thankful that a private citizen who is well-known and thought of has stepped up to say, I'm willing to put my resources in to make it work. I'm thankful that this council has a vision to work with everyone, and I am disappointed that this is another opportunity that we had to support and move forward. It seems that we are majoring on the minors and minoring on the majors. And if we had this kind of scrutiny at every level for the last three years, we wouldn't be sitting where we sit today. And, and I really hadn't planned to say nothing and just let it play itself out because we got a team and a staff that did what they were supposed to do. Now, we set policy, we allocated funds, and then we trusted our city staff that's well-qualified to research to see if it was right. And what they did is say, no, things aren't proper and appropriate, so we're not going to do it. So no money has been spent, so why would we even suggest that all the grant programs need to be looked at? We didn't ask that question about all the contracts that were entered into. We didn't ask that question about staffing decisions that were made. Well, some of us did. And I would just say, if you want to work together, let's work together indeed. And if we want to fix things, let's fix what needs to speak to the real bottom line issue, and not trying to buy houses falling down and fix it up so people can live in it and have somewhere decent in their neighborhoods and communities and have a chance to own it. Trying to help people own homes legitimately in their own neighborhoods in which they live and have value added to them. So I'm thankful for thirty thousand dollars that was spent to purchase this home. I'm thankful that people are willing to put what they can to put in. I'm thankful that we're willing to work together to make it happen. And if we want to move forward in unanimity, we got to move forward in unanimity of purpose and vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I do have a motion and a second, is there a need for further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Item number ten, is consideration of request to purchase one used generator from Gregory Pool Equipment Company in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the event center pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash one twenty-nine E. Ten. Is there a motion to approve the purchase and authorize the purchasing department to issue a veto according to the council's award? Senator. Motion made by Councilman Daughtry, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. Who's that? Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item number eleven is consideration of the following Imperial Center roof change orders. It's a removal replacement of a failed skylight system, installation of an additional insulation to improve slope on roof, and additional removals and relocation of the HVAC connections. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change orders and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city.
So.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Daughtry. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item number eleven passes. Item number twelve is consideration of ordinance adopting policy number Roman numeral ten seven, entitled Purchase Power Adjustment. Policy says the PPA rate for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-six. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Daughtry. Is there a need for discussion?
Mister Mayor, I'd.
Councilman Daughtry.
I'd ask for the attorney just to clarify about the public hearing, like, while we're not having.
Mister Attorney, please.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Councilman Daughtry. So generally speaking, when the city sets or adjusts electric rates, say, public hearing is required. The same statute that, that has that requirement, which is one fifty-nine B dash sixteen point one, allows for an exception to that hearing requirement in two circumstances. One is to deal with what the statute refers to as catastrophic events, and the other is where a rate needs to be set or adjusted in order to allow the city to continue to comply with applicable law or its contractual operations relating to outstanding funds or other indebtedness. So it's sort of this financial circumstances exception. The ordinance that is on the agenda tonight that adopts the policy. The ordinance that is on the agenda tonight that adopts the policy, if the ordinance is adopted, it also includes a finding that council would make that those circumstances stated in the statute would apply.
Thank you. Is there a need for further discussion? Councilman Knight, you'd like to recognize?
I do. I can be do it. I can make my comments after we prepare the vote for.
Oh, sure.
Okay. In reference to the discharge of power adjustment for the PPA rate, the council has been giving beat up on the rate, you know, the rate. And I understand that it has not been a increase in the rate since twenty seventeen. Am I correct?
That's also my understanding.
Okay. And whatever money you receive was put in a rate stabilization to offset what the wholesale rate was costing us, but it has consistently increased. And the money that we have had in a stabilization rate, we no longer have that. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. I think it's correct.
So therefore, if we haven't had an increase since twenty seventeen, and the money that we have had in a savings account or rate stabilization that we no longer have, then if the rate is not passed on, then it's stored by the city, which we do not have. Correct?
That is correct.
So therefore, this is the first time since twenty seventeen that we have had a rate increase in electric rate. Correct?
I believe that's correct.
Second thing, that the rates for Rocky Mountain, when we compare them to neighboring cities, it's one of the lowest when you compare it to Duke Dominion. I think Tarboro might be a tad bit lower than us. But we have been one of the lowest for a very long time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Versatile rates. Yes.
Saying yes quietly, you know, with your record saying yes, because you are the Kepa representative. And so it's known that we have read all this stuff concerning citizens and whoever citizens about the highest rates and all that. And we have been one of the lowest and have not had a rate. And I do wanna say that Ruben and I was on the council when we really learned about the Kepa Electric City Rate Committee, the bond holders and all of that. And Mayor Turner's told us not even to get involved because it's too difficult to understand. So we spent countless days and hours trying to figure it out with a former council member, Hans LeBrye and Lamont Wiggins. And we did. I was then the Kepa representative and we went to Tarboro, not just council members or the representative for the Kepa, but we had citizens to go. And we advocated for the least of those and for citizens and for the Kepa to realize that we were carrying this burden and that that burden would not be released until twenty twenty six until Duke fought us out. And then it was Rocky Mountain along with Newbern who joined together to sue to get lower rates or more money from the bottom line of the utility sale, which did occur. And so Councilman Blackwell and I still have there those scars about what really happened during that whole thing. And even did mention, Councilman Blackwell did mention that our citizens had been traumatized during that time. But we did see a relief in twenty seventeen up until this point. So if the story is told, can we leave this council meeting tonight that accurate information will be put out? And not try to put false information that would send people into a war. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Yes, sir. Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanna make one correction, Councilman. I said days and hours and it was years. It was years. We lived it out in years. And I just do wanna say, we were the only city in thirty two that created a rate stabilization fund that any that was funded to pay for the cost of operational increases during this time so that we wouldn't pass the operational increases on to the citizens of Rocky Mountain. And because we do not have fund balance sufficient to continue that particular fund, we now have to pay as we go. And this is what's happened. We're having to pay as we go. So let's be clear that we're not passing on anything that every other city in thirty two don't do every year and sometimes a couple of times a year. We were able to not have that to pass on because we had a sound fiscal policy then that was led by community advocated by the full council. And we took courageous steps to keep investment, to keep the return on our investment of benefit to every single individual household that had a utility bill in Rocky. So I take no pleasure in supporting this, but it's the right thing to do because we cannot operate, especially going into a COVID. We cannot operate what we cannot pay.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. This is Councilman Harris. I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure for the benefit of those here in attendance and listening in. We passed a rate increase for electric in this budget in June, effective July one. Do we not?
We did.
We did. So this is, this what we're acting upon now is not the first rate increase since twenty seventeen. It's just a, in addition to what we did in June. I just wanted to make that clarification because people might say, no, my rate increased in July and now you're increasing it again. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Go ahead.
That's true that we passed on something, was it not a rate increase? We did not vote on a rate increase. That was an administrative cost. And so, you know, that's where misinformation get out to the citizen. But you're right, Councilmember Harris, we did vote. But it was an administrative cost. It was not a rate increase. This is the first time that we voted on a rate increase for electric.
I think the message is that we have historically had rate stabilization. We do have to historically vote rates and we have worked hard to try to maintain those rates for as long as we possibly could. And so I think that that's really what you're hearing from everybody. So a fair statement.
Yeah, that is. And if anybody, Mr. Barney, you have staff, if anybody can verify what I said because you agree with Councilman Harris, which that was not accurate. It was not a rate increase. It was administrative cost. You have Mr. Bradley sitting up here, utility director, and then you have Ms. Hall sitting on my right and Mr. Bradley sitting up in there.
I know it's important, but let's not get caught up on the absolute minutia. I think the point is.
It's not minutia. Somebody said we passed the rate. It looks like we don't know what we're talking about. So we, so I'm saying we did not pass the rate. It was an administrative cost, but I'll leave it there. But that was not true.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Harris.
For those who have received a new power bill since July one, they have seen the increase. So that to me tells the budget that it was in the budget. The increase revenues to the electric fund was increased was in the budget. So to me, we passed the budget, which included that rate increase.
That was not a rate increase. We need to be, we need to be clear. Because if we saying that we did not have a rate increase and then somebody saying we had a rate increase, it looks like some of us lying. You got your staff, let them tell us what it was. Was it a rate increase or was it administrative cost? We did not vote on a rate increase. It was an administrative cost.
All right.
Well, I apologize if the rate word rate is wrong. But at the end of the day, consumers, just like myself and all others, our utility bill went up. So in the eyes of the consumer, their electricity cost went up. It had to do with an administrative charge to charge additional costs.
Yes, say it correctly.
Okay, I'll say it correctly. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
But there's another matter that I was not going to say. And I wanted to bring it up, Mr. Mayor.
Therefore.
The reason why I voted against the thirty thousand dollar request. And I've said this several times being on the council. And I said it several times as a public speaker. All of this has to do with the special housing grant program that was being administered before I joined the council. The businesses and the nonprofits were selected. It was a committee appointed by the council. And I did ask the interim manager, Peter Barney, that there was no minutes of any meetings, there's no formal RFPs extended on how these grants were selected and extended and policies and procedures were not followed because of the lack of minutes, et cetera, et cetera. So I wanted to go on record, that's why I voted no. I was not going to say anything this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. But the issue at hand is the consideration of ordinance adopting the policy number Roman numeral ten seven point zero. We have had a robust conversation about the difference between rates and administrative overhead. There has been an increase. We were voting deny based on what our attorney has pointed out, based on a situation we found ourselves in where we have to cover the additional cost. And so there's a motion on the floor. There is a second. Is there any further discussion related to this particular matter that anybody would like to speak to? Question has been called. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
What do you say? It was inaccurate.
Thank you. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say this for you?
No, that's not completely.
I know you, I know.
You can say it. The meeting's just not ending.
I just want to encourage those that did community wealth building, the battle, the battle of others, and I thank Mr. McBride for stepping up and taking on this responsibility. I wanna say that we will not stop rehabbing our community. And when this house is ready, we're gonna invite the entire council in so you can walk through to see what community ownership and community collaboration really look like. I wanna thank you for your consideration, but this will not stop.